fines and penalties pursuant to Article 16 of the New York Town Law. The public is invited to attend this public hearing to offer comments on the proposed local law. The law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the Town of Clinton Town Clerk's Office for inspection during regular business hours and on the town's website at townofclinton.com. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the date, time, and place aforesaid by order of the Board.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm turning the meeting over to Councilman Dean Michael, who will open up the meeting for public comment and take the comments as we go. Dean?
Okay. Is there any public comment? Obviously, I took the recommendations from last month, and Shane, our town attorney, made the adjustments to separate the regular zoning from what he's now calling enhanced. So that's how he separated it and identified both the ag events and the Airbnb hosted, non-hosted. So, go ahead.
Hi, Tavina Maximova, seven hundred and ninety-three Hill Road. I would have a question for the Board and maybe a concern that we're singling out certain types of commercial activities versus others. Why would it be okay to run in the legal hotel and not an Airbnb, for example, or an ag event? Why are these three activities singled out versus other types?
Well, we don't have any hotels in town, so at the present time.
If there is one, that's a violation. How would us treat it?
Well, right now, it would be treated as not enhanced.
Exactly. And my concern is, why do you isolate things like ag events, for example, for those kind of things versus, you know, other types of commercial activities?
Well, I don't see us having a hotel or motel in the town, so.
Right.
That's the only separation between. But if we did get an application in, then we can certainly modify the, you know, this.
So what if somebody is doing it, though?
What is?
What if somebody is violating zoning use?
Again, it's the difference between these two. So the difference is, you know, these commercial activities are new to the town, and so we're trying to designate them separately. But obviously, as we're going through zoning revisions, we can identify more things that we could probably throw into the mix. But we're trying to get this on the books as it stands now, and certainly, we could take a look at all the other items that potentially could be out there. If someone's running a motel or a hotel, that's a little bit of extreme, so I don't think you're going to see that. But you could see certainly, you know, somebody operating, you know, an Airbnb or renting out, you know, space as such that they shouldn't be.
Right.
For instance, being on the planning and zoning, you know that there's been several applications that certainly don't match what the current law allows for. So this would now take into consideration those.
Yeah, I think the concern raised last time by, I think, Ross and me was more related to creating two levels of fines, one for residential uses of people who violate, you know, smaller parts of different parts of the town versus commercial activity. And I don't think this addresses it fully. So if you say that there's an opening to do it through the regular zoning revision, that could be an avenue, but I do think that this, you know, unfairly singles out certain types of activities versus others.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to identify which commercial activities, because, again, we don't have a lot of commercial.
Right.
I mean, we have one parcel that's industrial, a couple of them that are commercial, and for the most part, that's going to be it. I mean, we don't have a lot of potential for commercial activity.
Right. But there is a lot of potential for doing things that are not, you know, currently done or, you know, allowed, so that's my concern. So anyway.
Is there something, just out of curiosity, is there something that you know that's going on that's a concern of yours, or that?
Yeah, I do have a concern. I mean, you may know what it is, but I have concern that there's, you know, facilities around here that are operating in violation of the use, zoning. There is, you know, there's cases of people running illegal hotels in town, right? So.
Well, that's stuff we'd like to know about, because, I mean, there's safety concerns that obviously, we take that very seriously in our building, our building and zoning department. God forbid there's a fire or anything else, they don't have the proper safety.
Right.
That should be addressed. The zoning law doesn't allow, you know, right now, we don't have that. So for there, it's legal, and that stuff should be known. And the only way a lot of that stuff gets known is if someone brings it to the attention, you know, so if you've got some information.
Now, are you saying hotel, or are you saying more of like a boarding house?
Boarding house? I mean, you know, again, the point is, why single out these three types of activities versus others?
Well, we're addressing two activities that are brand-new to our books.
Right.
So we needed to come up with violations for those two new activities.
Right. But why not apply the same level of a violation than the rest of the violations?
You've got to be very specific.
Why single them out for different type of violation?
You can't just say something that's commercial, or something that's this, or something. You've got to be very specific. So we're being very specific on two very specific activities.
If somebody opens a mechanic shop that's not zoned to be there, are they going to be fined with the previous type of violation?
Yeah.
Okay. And why would that be the case?
That's been the law. If we do nothing, it's still the case. So this is just really addressing those two items.
Yeah.
So if we need to address other things, then we'll address other things.
Yeah, I think there should be some sort of level playing field for, you know, commercial activities versus maybe others, but all the commercial activities.
But if someone's, you say, like a mechanic shop, but if someone's running it out of their house, number one, they're not allowed to. But if they're running it out of their house, does that really get to the level of a commercial operation?
Well, it's Airbnb that's hosted, right? I mean.
I mean, we define whether it be hosted versus non-hosted as two very generically different things, because having it hosted means that the owner's there and is monitoring the activity versus non-hosted. So, you know, trying to be very specific on it.
Running a mechanic shop that's not legally zoned is not as bad as running an Airbnb that is not permitted.
Well, I mean, certainly, we're always concerned about environmental impacts of what a garage could propose, and that's why when we were in our zoning revision, we didn't allow for certain activities like gas stations and such that were within the aquifer. So we've tried to address certain things and certain activities, especially towards the environmental aspects of it.
I understand, I understand. So if someone opens a gas station somewhere where it's not allowed, they're going to get the old.
How can you open a gas station?
Huh?
You can't open up a gas station.
That's an extreme example.
That's a very extreme example, because they need DEC and a lot of other approvals that it would never happen.
Okay. Again, I think that the code should be more equitable and should apply similar level of penalties for all different types of commercial activities and not single out these three. That's my comment, my position. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, I guess we can close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
I don't know if we wanted to do. No, that's okay. There being no further comments, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All vote? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, now we do adjournment. I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Meeting is adjourned, public hearing, rather, is adjourned. Then we'll scoot over to the regular town board meeting. Okay, you clean up there, Jerry? You got it running right?
Yep, we're fine.
Oh, good. So we'll start off with a regular town board meeting. I make a, I call the regular town board meeting of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one to order. We have a quorum present. We'll all pledge to the flag and then have a moment of silence for nine-one-one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A brief moment of silence, please, for the nine-one-one victims. Thank you. Okay, the first item of business is always approve minutes. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August tenth, twenty twenty-one, public hearing on fines and penalties, local law. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August tenth, twenty twenty-one, town board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, town board special meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, now we're going to have a public discussion. Is anyone in the audience going to do a public discussion on agenda items? Okay, I just want to be sure. We'll open it, I just, sometimes there aren't, that's why I ask. I make a motion to open the meeting to public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. At this time, we have the public comments on agenda items. Anything on the agenda? Come on up, speak into the microphone, give your name, street address, and try to just talk for about, you know, three minutes or something like that. Go to it.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Cook, and I live on Willow Lane, and I'm here to speak about the proposal to charge the library $150 a month, payments to the town of Clinton. And I want to talk a little bit about the history of public libraries for a minute, because, you know, that's what I do. And, you know, there was a great Republican philanthropist by the name of Andrew Carnegie who gave $40 million at the turn of the century, the nineteenth to the twentieth century, to build public libraries all across this country. But what people don't often remember is he didn't just give the money to build the libraries. He required that the towns that were to receive the construction money make their contribution. They had to, number one, raise the money for the land and purchase the land, and number two, there had to be a commitment from the municipality that was receiving this construction grant to forever and ever after agree for annual support of that library. That's in the great tradition of American philanthropy. It's an old, old tradition. We don't just give things away, but we also are generous when the opportunity arises to support others' activities. Andrew Carnegie didn't believe in handouts. He believed that it was important to support activities that would make people better people, that would educate people, that would uplift people. And that's why he thought, well, if I just give a library to these communities, and I don't ask for something in return, we might run into people who might even back away from their own town libraries and not support their own town libraries. Specifically, he was thinking about municipalities that might refuse to support their libraries. And I just want to suggest that we have in our town a voluntary group that came together in that tradition many years ago and built the library that we have in this town, and without any strings attached, as I understand it, they generously gave that library to this town, expecting that the town would support it on an annual basis for here and ever after. And I think it is just a very, very poor commentary on our town that we can't honor that spirit of philanthropy, whether it's Andrew Carnegie's or the women who worked so hard to build that library for us back in the sixties. So I'm very much against charging the library anything to exist, and in fact, we should be giving the library more money than they already receive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, twice? Okay, I make a motion to close the public comment section and return to regular order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next is supervisors' comments. I only have two short ones. One, Dutchess County is asking residents and businesses to report to them any IDA storm damage incurred during their, using their portal. And it's a, I'm not even going to read it, it'll be in the minutes and also be on the town webpage as soon as possible. More details on the IDA storm damage can be found on the town's webpage, www.townofclinton.com, so you can find everything right there. In mid-October, the Dutchess County Transportation Council will be doing a traffic safety study of Hollow Road, that's County Route fourteen, in the vicinity of Frost Mills. Hopefully, this study will enable road improvements to be made to reduce accidents on the portion of the Hollow Road. There'd be a lot of accidents there. So that's all I have under supervisors' comments. Next is reports, planning board.
On August seventeenth, the planning board met. The first item on the agenda was a property at twenty-one to Lower Lane in which the applicant was seeking a area variance for the setback from thirty-four feet to fifteen feet. The parcel was 1.18 acres and a hamlet, and it received a positive recommendation. The next item on the agenda was a property on Center Road for Rosenthall and Bledwin. They're applying for a steep slopes permit, and it's a nice-sized parcel, seventeen point nine three acres, but the applicant is proposing a single-family residence, and the property has an area that was protected by the Dutchess County Land Conservancy. A public hearing was opened and closed, comments from the town engineer were discussed and reviewed, negative declaration was issued, and they performed a restoration bond if needed and approved by the town board. The requested steep slopes permit and soil erosion plan were granted with conditions. The next item on the agenda is a parcel at ninety-three Ruski Lane. Anybody driving by would know that it's, I think, Town of Pleasant Valley where the driveway enters, but towards the backside is Town of Clinton. So the applicant needed a wetlands permit because it was crossing a federal wetland, so they needed to provide information and controls for erosion and so on. It's a fifty-five point two five acre parcel in an R-five zone. The property owner wished to construct a four-bedroom new residence. The proposed driveway does go all the way to the proposed house, crossing federal wetlands, and the public hearing was set for September twenty-first, and no action, further action was taken. The second meeting, which was scheduled for September seventh, was canceled due to a lack of quorum. End of report.
Okay, the next one, ZBA?
The ZBA met on August twenty-sixth. First item on the agenda was that same twenty-one to Lower Lane where the applicant requested for that variance. The requested variance was granted. The second item on the agenda was an interpretation by the Punchards for Sections two fifty dash twenty-eight B and J. The applicants are seeking reversal of the zoning administrator's determination letter dated May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one regarding interpretations of that sections and further related to smoke and fumes, odor emitted from ninety-two Deer Ridge Drive. The public hearing was open and adjourned. The applicant requested the adjournment to the meeting because of the absence of their counsel. End of meeting.
Thank you. CAC?
The CAC met on August eleventh, in person, in the Masonic Hall. They discussed the ongoing pollinator pathway effort and updates from the Climate Smart Task Force. The Library Friends Group has been putting together welcome totes for new residents, and the CAC has been distributing town and environmental information to new residents in their Welcome to the Town folders for many years. So Barbara Manziel has now partnered with the Library Friends Group, and they plan to combine their efforts into one welcome folder. End of report.
I'm going to do Smart Task Force as separate or as part of that one?
Oh, yeah, I didn't write a report for that this month, did I?
Okay.
Well, the Climate Smart Task Force met. We have now generated a fairly substantial list of actions that we have taken and we're working on getting them, all those points put into the system, and we have identified four or five actions that we plan on taking in the future, and we're dividing up amongst the task force, amongst the ten members, who's going to be working on what things. So we've got a good organizational base started, and we're going to start doing some serious work soon, probably this coming month.
Okay, thank you. Recreation Committee?
Yes, Recreation Committee did not meet in this past month. We are forming a new committee, which will be in effect for the October meeting. Recreation, the camp sessions for this year were very successful in spite of the delay with COVID and a lot of things that we had to do that were out of the ordinary. Unfortunately, it was a smaller group of children that we had because of the COVID thing. We needed to have more staff, which was a real problem. Coming off of COVID, we had problems with getting lifeguards and a lot of staff, so we hope that things will improve, and by next year, we'll be up to our normal capacity, which usually is about twice as much. We, as most of you know, I've announced that we did get a grant for upgrading Friends Park, and we will be implementing those upgrades starting the end of September. The Highway Department has also helped us out with negotiating the ability to pave the entrance from the road into Friends Park, which will be done by the end of September, which is something that we've wanted to do for a long time, so I thank them for that. And we've already made the arrangements to have that done. The parks, I don't know if any of you are aware, but we had vandalism in our parks over the last several weeks. In Friends Park, any of you that are familiar with the park know that we have a beautiful basketball court, and someone came in and vandalized it and destroyed one of the basketball hoops and so on, which is extensive. And in Friends Park, they came in and they rode all over, in the wetlands, and rode all over and dug up the lawns and stuff like that. So as a result of that, we've been talking about security for a long time. We are going to implement security for our parks, and that'll be done very quickly because we just, we've got beautiful parks and a lot invested in them, and unfortunately, we've got a faction of people that are coming from outside of the community to use our parks after hours. So we've also notified the Sheriff's Department, and they're going to have more vigilance in terms of riding by there, et cetera. So we're hopeful that we'll get all this resolved, and we're looking forward to a very active season coming up, okay? End of report.
Okay, thank you. Next one is building inspector. Number of building permits issued, thirteen. Number of COs or CCs issued, ten. Number of title searches, fifteen. He traveled two hundred and seventy-one miles. Total of construction is nine hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-four cents. Of that nine thousand, that's two homes being built, each one at four and a half million, roughly. The rest of it's all porches, decks, and stuff like that. So there's a lot of construction going on in town, which will increase our assessments, you know, because we have more properties to assess. So that's that report. The next one is zoning administrator. I've got to find it here. Okay, zoning administrator. Thirteen building permits were reviewed and issued. In other words, he's got to review them to make sure what the actions are taking comply with the zoning laws on setbacks and those various kind of criteria. Five denial letters for building permits. Some people didn't make it right away, so they got to go back and do their homework. Three variances required and approved. Eight zoning complaints recorded and investigated. Three zoning violation notices issued. That's when he finds a problem, he issues a notice so that they know that they're in violation. Four zoning violations corrected, which is good, and three STR, short-term rental violations being investigated. In other words, some people are illegally running it or whatever. You know, I don't have the physical details, there's too many of them here. So it's been a very busy time period, and it's going to be busier as we get more of these Airbnb and short-term, well, short-term rentals involved, or the ag exemption, or the ag events law, rather, because he's got to go and inspect those, too, for his various and sundry restrictions. So that's it. Next one is highway.
Hand patching and crack ceiling was performed in preparation of next month's paving on Heritage Road, Ryan Court and Friends View. Culvert pipes were replaced on Allen Road and Schultz Hill Road. Maintenance and culvert pipe cleaning has also been taking place on various roads. Dirt road repair has been extensive this summer because of the storms. Lots of time, materials, and equipment has gone into the remolding and reshaping of damaged roads. Tree work and debris tripping was performed after the summer storms that swept through our area. Several one-lane road signs were replaced to meet the current specifications. The electronic speed trap sign has been moving around town to remind travelers to slow down on the town roads. Ongoing summer roadside mowing and weed whacking along the roads and guardrails has made significant improvements. This month, the Highway Department is transferring the Ford F-150 pickup truck for use in the maintenance, building, and zoning departments. Applications are being accepted for winter seasonal employees with a valid driver's license. Please call the Highway Department for more information. End of report.
Thank you. Thank you. Scenic and Historic Roads?
Everything's been quiet still on that.
Library Report?
The library purchased two laptops that patrons can check out. Patrons checking out the laptops must be Clinton Community Library members in good standing and over the age of 18 years. The high school Battle of the Books team won first place this year. The Battle of the Books is a national summer reading program for students and participants are asked to read eight selected titles and then participate in trivia battles based on the books. And we're pretty happy that our little town won first place in this. On October 2nd, the library is hosting a fundraiser and a car show at the residence of Cliff Botway, 300 Schultzville Road. It's a pretty fantastic event that they did a couple of years ago and I'm looking forward to it this year. The next Board of Trustees meeting is on October 11th and it will be virtual by a go-to meeting. End of report.
Thank you. Next one is Cable Vision.
Me again. In a letter dated August 13th, 2021, Altice announced a series of changes to their cable rates. These changes do not affect phone or internet service. The rate changes took effect on September 13th, yesterday, and all customers should have received a 30-day notice of the changes. Due to the extensive nature of these rate changes, they have been posted on the town website at townofclinton.com. Yep, that's that.
Okay, thank you. Now, how about Cemetery?
Yeah, let's do that. There was one bale in Schultzville Cemetery. Elliot Werner Cemetery Custodian is finishing up a deed transfer in Pleasant Plains. There's one outstanding deed that is being followed up with at Pleasant Plains. We will be discussing a change to cemetery rules and regulations tonight, creating a deputy cemetery custodian position. End of report.
Okay, thank you. Zoning Revision?
So we were supposed to have a little meeting last month that got canceled because the zoning board needed to use the space down here. And so the question to the board is, with budgeting coming up, are we going to meet this month or are we going to put it on hold?
I'm running out of time.
I hate to put it on hold, but we have meetings, two, three a week. It's very difficult to spend the amount of time. My vote would be to push it out. It's unfortunate, but.
All right, so we'll push it till November when the budget's over.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Transmission Lines? Are you done? I didn't mean to jump you.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, I thought you were. On October 2021, National Grid will start tree and brush clearing of the transmission right away. There may also be some earth grading done to improve accessibility, so they can go up and down the areas. In spring 2022, more work will be done in preparation for the removal of the existing towers and installation of the new monopoles. The project should be complete in early 2024. So just gives you a rough schedule. Okay, any other? Wick or Safety?
Wick hasn't met.
Karen?
So you have Safety Report, only to let everyone know that I'm going to be, we're going to be doing a, we're formulating the committees in various business areas again and we're going to be doing a site-wide safety inspection on everything. That's more of an internal piece of business, but it'd be hot, so see how to do it. I just thought I'd mention that, okay?
Okay, Old Business. Dean, on your approval for the local law?
So I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board approves Resolution of 2021, adopting Local Law Number 5 of 2021, a local law for fines and penalties, and that the town clerk is, be directed to enter this local law in the minutes of this meeting and give due notice of the adoption to the Secretary of State.
Is there a second?
Giuliano, second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Do you want to meet with me?
Okay.
Call me later.
So the library.
Library lease?
The library had their meeting last night and I was informed that they are still discussing the library lease and going through, they're going through it with a fine tooth comb, let's say. And they'll let us know when they're ready to either approve it or come to us with some suggestions for changes.
Okay, next one. Okay, the next one is a local law. I'm introducing a local law to opt out of cannabis consumption. That's smoking pollers is simple words. Okay, now, since the town board approved not allowing marijuana-smoking pollers to exist in town, we must pass a local law and have a public hearing at the next town board meeting on October 12th. That's part of the approval of local law. So I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board approve Resolution of 2021, introducing local law number, subject to permissive referendum, to opt out of cannabis consumption in the Town of Clinton and that a public, this means smoking pollers, and that a public hearing be held at the town hall on October 12th, 2021, at 6:15 o'clock prevailing time. Is there a second?
Second.
More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, the next one is Cemetery Rules.
I'll make the motion and then explain what we're doing here. I make the motion, be it resolved, that the town board approves Resolution Number of 2021, adopting updated rules and regulations for town cemeteries to include deputy cemetery custodian labeled Schedule A. Is there a second?
Second.
So what this is, is we have a very capable and able cemetery custodian in Elliot Werner and he's done a fine job for the last few years. However, if Elliot ever wants to go on vacation, he'd have to make sure that nobody in town dies.
Wants to use the cemetery.
Yes, yeah, so.
Wants to use the cemetery.
So we've amended the rules so that he can appoint a deputy in his place for, you know, just to carry out his duties if he were not available. And it's as simple as that, nothing else changed in the rules.
Okay. Any further discussion by anybody on the board? Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Townwide Revale, Dean?
So I'm kind of wondering where we're going, only for the fact that we're discussing our budget. Are we definitely going to go with having a deputy or data collector person, you know, to assist the tax assessor? Figuring that would be about $21,000 a year versus a townwide revale would probably cost us over $250,000. But even with having the data collector to help out Teresa, you'd still be doing the commercial side of it, which would be roughly between 125, 100 to 125,000. So we'd be saving about 125,000. So that's basically five, six years' worth of having this assistant to do constant revaling, which, again, Teresa, in my last comment, was not looking to really do any major assessments beyond what she did this year, only because if she did, she would have to raise everybody's assessment about 30%. So we're kind of lagging a little, only because she wants to drag her feet with it. She's still going to keep us at 100% for whatever rebates, star exemption rebates and so on that we get from being at 100%. But I just need a direction. So if we're saying this is what we're going to do, then I'll just write up the bid packet with just the commercial aspect of it.
When we discuss payrolls, we included the deputy assessor.
Right.
Yeah.
For this purpose.
But that was all tentative to us.
I'm just saying, we've included that.
I just need to know which direction we're going because, you know, we could.
You can't keep delaying it. That's the dilemma you get into. I mean, I've done three of them already. And if you don't do them timely, you go all the way down to like 50% and then eventually you wind up like 10 or 20.
Teresa's going to have us at 100%, where she's already been assessed 100%. So, and she feels confident that next year we'll be at 100% as well. But, so that's why she's kind of delaying a little to see if there's a market correction, which has slowed down. So that would be less of an impact long-term by delaying it a little, rather than reacting at every spike of up and down.
I'm fine with that.
Well, if you do the math, I mean, and the budget that we're trying to put together and all the things that it's going to be required for the budget for 2022, I think the prudent thing to do is to do with the deputy for now for a whole lot of reasons. So that's my vote.
Mm-hmm.
That sounds reasonable.
All right, so next month I'll put together the bid packet that we're going to look at. Like I said, I have 50 pages. I don't think we need 50 pages of it, but.
No, only 49.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll come back next month with the, going forward with just the commercial bid.
Okay, ARPA?
So, yeah, I want to start getting moving forward. We had some ideas and stuff like this and one of the things that I want to also sit with Todd because obviously we have some drainage issues and we can use some of that money for it. But also, we're talking about the parks and stuff with the cameras and we've got to get broadband. So I'm thinking the best way, we'll have to get some estimates of what that's going to cost so we can put that into the mix on using, start using some of that money. October, we've got to have some sort of report idea of what we're doing by the end of October. So I have a list of ideas that we spoke about when we had that one public hearing. Is everyone fairly good on, you know, starting to use some of those ideas to start figuring out what we can put bids out for to get pricing? You know, what it's going to cost us to do, like the parks for getting the broadband in? We can, so we can get the video and the surveillance in there. Some of the drainage issues that we can absorb some of that cost back so it's not coming out of the town budget for, which is stormwater drainage issues. We can, you know, do, and we can also plan for next year. I know Todd was saying there were some increases on culvert pipes that tripled and stuff like that. And we're looking at the budget that we might be able to save some of next year's budget for that, specifically for infrastructure. Any other suggestions?
I have a question.
Yes.
That some of these things that we have had to do, we've had to do prior to submitting something, are we allowed to still submit that as a?
Yeah, we got, we got, we got the next few years.
Like the security. I can't wait for the process to work out.
Well, we got the, we got the first payment, right?
Oh, we have the money, but we don't have approval to spend anything yet.
Yeah, well, we got, what we got to do is we just got to put down to get a price, what it's going to cost and then we can, you know, put that in our plan. So for October, we've got to have some sort, some direction. At least we don't have to have the whole plan figured out, but we got to.
No, I'll have that within the week.
All right, so then you and I will talk about that and if we got to furnish, get some estimates or whatever, just so we can approve it, it's got to be approved through the board process.
One of the things that I've suggested in the past and we've discussed is that a lot of the towns have signage that changes and lets people know what's going on. And so having one in front of here and one in front of the other park on Soul Point would allow us to communicate with the town's residents.
That's great.
As to things that are going on, things that are changing, things that are of concern, roads that are out, whatever, we could communicate this, not only from Carol having, sending out emails, but also on the signage. So if we could use that ARPA fund for that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that definitely would fit in there. It's a form of communication and getting to our word out. So it's kind of like, I guess we can kind of work with the broadband kind of.
My simple question on that, who will make up the sign and change the letters? Because that's an expense.
Well, we would do something.
It's electronic.
Electronic.
No, it's not. The one that I'm saying is electronic.
It's not allowed in our zoning, electronic signs.
Well, we, we're on town, you know, on town park, we might want to make something small. That's, it's a form of communication.
All right, no, I'm just, you know.
And we might have to address it as a two-part, I don't know. I mean, obviously, yes, it's not allowed.
Obviously, when we develop the thing, we're going to talk about who's responsible and how we do it.
I'm just saying, it comes with extra cost over time. I've been involved with signs for many different organizations and it's fun for the first two or three months and after that, it disappears.
Yeah, but it's nice to, I think it's nice to have kind of, you know, something where people can see what's going on. They're going in the parks, they're driving by, might be able to get some information. So we can definitely look into it.
The other thing is, I have two bids already, all ready to go.
Okay, for what?
For the scanning and laser fishing of all the documents. I got them ready to go.
Okay.
What do I do?
So we got to sit down, we got to approve, then we can start putting them in our report for October so we can start moving forward.
Bids will probably run out, they're only good for like 90, 30 days or 90 days.
All right, well, this is news to me that you just got the bid.
Well, I just got them.
Okay.
I've been working on it.
All right, so I'll check it out this week so we can see what.
I can send you all of, all the information.
Yeah, or I'll stop and pick it up. I'll gladly stop and pick it up so we can move that forward. You have an idea?
It's about 55,000 altogether.
Well, that was our plan, that was one of our other plans to do.
Yeah, it was submitted before, I mean, I didn't have a number at that point.
Okay, we'll get it worked out, sounds good.
I think we need to remember too, that we have a few years here. We don't have to like figure out all of our projects and get it done immediately. We have.
But if we got a little bit, it'd be nice to start getting something done.
Sure, certainly.
I mean, the park security is more of an emergent need.
That I can't wait on.
Okay, good.
Yeah, but you got to wait till all, or whoever approves it so you can spend it. So that's the other part of it.
Okay.
And I don't know how long it is because I've never done one.
As an NEU, since they required, you know, the, everyone else had to have the reports, but we're an NEU, so we didn't have to do the traditional reporting on that. We got to do a report of getting an idea of what we need to have done by the end of October. So we can get some, I mean, but we have time to break it down and spend it. So as long as we get some ideas down and then we can, you know, submit the forms, we'll get all the information for that before, you know, for the next meeting we'll have it so we can get it out. And then, all right, I'm on it. Thank you.
I'm just wondering if the audience out there is understanding what this whole thing is. Can you just?
Sure.
Give a synopsis very quickly?
So ARPA American Rescue Plan that was enacted over the springtime, that was signed into law, gives money to state and local governments and different municipalities of money that we can spend towards infrastructure. I mean, it is very limited on certain directions that we can spend it. We gained, was it $430-plus thousand in the town? It's over two payments. We got one payment of 200 and something thousand this year. Then we'll get the other one in a year. And we can use it for these infrastructure. Like I said, it can be broadband, communicating with our neighbors. We can also use it for, you know, having some sort of help in local businesses, although we don't have a lot of businesses in here. So we're trying to find ideas. And anyone who does have an idea that they would like to see something happen, and I can sit and go over the, you know, guidelines with you and has some ideas, we're always glad to listen to the town and for that. But it is very limited on what we can use it for. It can't be just for any projects. Got to, like, one of the big things is broadband. They want to see infrastructure, but they also said on some of the meetings that I sat down through, the infrastructure, they're a little hesitant on pushing that just because there's another infrastructure plan that's, you know, that may be, may or may not be coming, that 1.2 trillion that the federal government's working on, that we might be able to use for drainage as well or, you know, something. We don't have main water lines, we don't have town water, we don't have town sewers. So that part of the bill kind of doesn't apply to us. So we're trying to find areas such as the parks. Our communication with, like, as Ray said, our microfiche and getting, you know, our data input and protected better is allowed with that potential signs that Dean said. So these are all ideas that we can use the money on. And we got a few years to use it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next one's COVID Restrictions. With the new option of in-person or Zooming meetings, we are returning to the in-person town board meetings to allow the public to participate in the. to allow the public to participate in discussions. All meeting attendees and visitors to offices will be required to wear a mask even if COVID vaccinated. Now, we will require more operators for the TV operation to simultaneously broadcast on Cablevision Channel twenty-two and also on YouTube. Anyone interested in these paid part-time positions for working about three hours, a town board meeting or public hearing meeting, contact me, Town Supervisor, by email, townsupervisor@townofclinton.com. You will be trained in the operation of the electronic equipment. Computer operation knowledge is very helpful. So that's where we stand on that. Next one is the status of the Didi Barrett grant. I received authorization from Albany to start the process of doing this subject grant. There are more financial papers need to be signed so we can get reimbursed for the funds expended. There's always papers from Albany, but at least we got the start. So we'll get the others when they ship them. Remember, there are two pieces to the grant, replacing of the old highway garage roof and the ramp and new door for the library. The first project roof is having its bid package being prepared with approval for bidding to be done at today's town board meeting. The county's bid net will be used to get many bids for approval at the town, at the October twelfth town board meeting. The work should take about one week or less to complete before mid-December twenty twenty-one. This project was chosen since it is a generic bid and the work can be done quickly before the cold weather comes. The second project, lar- library ramp and door, will take longer to do the required architectural drawings and construction. The plan is to approve the bid package at the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one or January eleventh, twenty twenty-two town board meeting and award the bid by the February eighth, twenty twenty-two town board meeting. The county's bid net will be used to get many bids. Construction can start in the spring twenty twenty-two after the ground thawed. This project was chosen second because it requires more architectural time and work can only be done in the spring or later. So that's the status of that. Okay, now the next one is actually the bid for the highway garage, garage roof. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves going for bidding for the replacement of the roofing on the old highway garage using the county's bid net to get more bids. Bid opening will be at ten AM prevailing time at the town clerk's office, twelve fifteen Center Road, Reinbeck, New York, one-two-five-seven-two. We agreed to waive performance, labor, and material bonds, but will require a one-year maintenance bond. In addition, there must be the thirty or forty-year manufacturer's warranty on the shingles. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carried. Budget status is next. With the delays in getting the twenty-two budget information and town supervisor, supervisor staffing, it is impossible to ensure the September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one deadline can be met. The previous schedule is not correct anymore. The only deadline that we must meet is the November twentieth, twenty-one budget. That's the date for the budget. So that's the status, okay? What's the next thing? Okay, the next one is the approval of Reese. Every year, the Boy Scout troop from Reinbeck does a little fundraiser in our town. And, um, they run it over two weekends or two Saturdays over at the highway recycling center. Okay, and they always ask permission. So I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approve the Boy Scout troop two-twenty-eight Reese sale fundraiser at the transfer station on November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one and December fourth, twenty twenty-one from seven-thirty AM to, until noon contingent upon receipt of the certificate, of the certificate of insurance. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, the next one is, we do this just as a protection. We just never know. We don't expect it, but can't tell. Uh, if you over, if you exceed the tax cap without having a local law to allow you to exceed it, you're penalized. It costs us basically nothing to do the local law, so we do the local law every year just to protect ourselves. We haven't really used it, but you never know. It's crazy world out there. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approve resolution of twenty twenty-one introduced, introducing local law number sub of twenty twenty-one to override the tax cap and that a public hearing be held at the town hall on October twelfth, twenty twenty-one at six-twenty-five o'clock PM prevailing time. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Just in case you didn't realize, that date is the same date as a regular town board meeting. It's not an extra meeting time. Okay, IMA with Redhook.
Uh, this one was kind of a surprise to me on, on the agenda. I didn't ask for it to be on the agenda, so I, I didn't, uh, know it was gonna be on. But Redhook, we have a shared services agreement and Redhook, usually when we enter these with other towns, we, we have, uh, an IMA agreement and that agreement is in place for however many years we're in the shared services with those towns. But Redhook is requiring that we have a new one every year and sign a new one every year. Um, the problem for tonight is that I haven't seen it. I, it wasn't in the emails that I saw from Ray. So we don't have the agreement to vote on tonight. Um, so I would ask Todd or Ray to get. I would ask Todd to get in touch with, what's that?
I thought we had it like a month ago.
I looked, I, I, I looked through the emails tonight when I got here.
Yeah.
And I, I didn't have a copy of the IMA agreement in any of the emails.
Problem is, is that we're running out of time and Redhook's told us if we don't sign it, then we're done. And Todd needs to use a lot of their equipment in order to pave the roll, uh, rollers and the pavers and stuff like that, things that we don't have.
Yeah, I.
So if we don't have this agreement, we're gonna get ourselves in trouble and have to spend twice as much to go out and rent the equipment.
So you should send it to the town clerk, so.
No, it was sent out a month ago from Ray's office.
So if I receive it, I'll make sure it's on the agenda. I'll make sure it's done. I'll coordinate with Redhook Town Clerk and we'll move it. So just that's why I.
Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, I'm gonna reach out after the meeting to find out when our drop dead date is for approving this and see if maybe we can get together at some point.
What is Todd saying? Today?
He's saying now.
Tonight is the deadline.
Do you have a copy of it there?
No, it's been sent out. We just sent out it a year and a half ago.
IMA agreement is an agreement between the towns for shared services. So we supply them with trucks or equipment and then they supply us with their trucks and equipment that we don't have. We have an agreement in place with all the other towns around us and it's a blanket policy for years. And once we sign it, it's done. For some reason, Redhook wants this done every single year. Redhook has the ten-wheelers, extra ten-wheelers we have for Blacktop and next week that we need to use. Cause if not, I gotta contract out trucks. That's a hundred and ten dollars an hour for contracted trucks. They have also other machines and attachments that we can use, that we can save tremendously on that if I contract this out, it's gonna cost us money. This has been sent out a year and a half ago. It's a agreement with the towns for shared services. Um, Redhook's attorney has already gone through this. It's, it's the same IMA agreement with the other towns. For some reason, the town of Redhook's supervisor wants this done because if not, then we're gonna cut ties with Redhook. If we cut ties with Redhook, it's gonna cost us money. Like I said, we, we, all the other towns, Stanford, Mylan, Unionville, Town of Washington, uh, Town of Pleasant Valley, it's a blanket policy. Once we sign it once, then we're good for, forever. For some reason, the town of Redhook wants this done every single year. Their town attorney sent this over a year and a half ago and I've been asking to get this approved for a year and a half now. If not, like I said, I gotta contract out trucks. Next week is the busiest week for us because we got different things going on with Blacktop and microsealing and everything else. Without Redhook, I gotta contract out trucks. That's a hundred and ten dollars an hour. With Redhook's truck, that's saving us a hundred and ten dollars an hour. Their truck has come to us, then we send trucks up to them. One hand washes the other. So we don't have to contract out trucks and it's not costing us anything. This is a legal agreement between the attorneys. Our attorney has done it with the other towns.
Sure.
And for years with, like I said, Stanford, Mylan and these other towns. For some reason, the town of Redhook wants this done.
Todd, this is a contract that we signed already?
No, we haven't signed it with Redhook. I've been working with it for a year and a half now. I've sent the IMA agreement to.
And they, and they've been working with us.
Yes.
Without them. I didn't know that. Um.
Did you send it to the town attorney?
Yes, we've sent it. We've, a year, year and a half ago, we've sent this out to Shane, our town attorney and everything.
What did he say?
He's in agreement with it. Town of Redhook attorney's the one who drew it up. Shane looked at it. It's the same agreement we have with all these other towns. There's no.
Can, can, can we, can we?
Difference in any of these agreements. It's the same blanket agreement that's blanketed with all the other towns. There's no change. All it is, is the Town of Clinton has an agreement with Redhook for shared services. Redhook has a shared service agreement with the Town of Clinton.
My question, I'm gonna ask the board, would, would the, can we approve it tonight with the, the caveat that we just verify with Shane tomorrow morning that, um.
That it's not changed.
That there's no change on that?
Is that something we can do?
At least this way they would know that we're.
Our intent is to, to, you know, as of today, so we don't, because we can't come, you know, we gotta have it today. And we just verify tomorrow morning, you know, with Shane and he gets back to us right away.
I say yes.
Otherwise, like, some things won't happen because we cannot afford to do them.
But we're gonna be spending money that we don't need to.
We, we don't have the money.
I'll try to save money.
And I mean, we do have these agreements with other towns that, you know, they, it works hand in hand.
So like I said, with the other towns, we signed it once and it's a blanket agreement, you know, for life unless we change an agreement or they change an agreement. But there's, since I've been there at the highway department almost twenty-five years, there's never been a change. It's always been one hand washes the other. If something happens to our equipment up there, they're responsible. If something happens to their equipment while we're here, then we're responsible. I mean, it's the same legal document that all these other towns have had. And all Redhook's town supervisors asking that we sign this every, for, I, I don't know why, but he's asking to have us sign this every single year with Town of Redhook.
Okay.
Okay.
It's the only town that's done this to us.
So can I make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion that we approve, that the town board approves the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Redhook for labor services pursuant to the approval of town attorney Shane Egan tomorrow morning.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Nancy?
Um, I've, I've actually talked about the security thing already, but I would like to make an appeal again. Um, I, um, as we're forming a, uh, a, a very viable committee, recreation committee, uh, there is so much to be done, so many opportunities to work independently and to work alongside the library uh, in concert with them to utilize our, our parks better. I would ask anyone out there, retirees, anyone out there that would like to come and talk to us about being on the, the recreation committee, no, no, um, pressure, okay? And it's something we won't even necessarily have to meet every month because during certain periods, there's not a lot of activity. But I would ask if anyone is interested to please give me a call. Um, my number is on the web, I, um, and, um, or my email. And I will respond right away. I'll tell you exactly what we need. Um, there, and again, it's not you have to do the work, but we need a committee to utilize what we have, okay? So I would use this time to ask that of anyone out there listening. That's it.
Okay. Any more items before we go to other items?
I just wanna go back quick to the IMA with Todd. Can you just make sure tomorrow that you email Shane with the contract and CC myself, Dean and Ray Overly on it? So that we're all in on it. Thank you.
Okay, so resignation appointments. I make a motion to accept the resignation of Paul Welsh as seasonal cemetery maintenance person, summer groundskeeper effective August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Next one is, uh, I make a motion to appoint Samantha Campbell as clerk effective September seventh, twenty twenty-one at fifteen dollars per hour for twenty hours per week. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, discussion? She just came off of lifeguards going back. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Next one is, um, they need a part-time clerk over in the justice system, the court clerk system there. And this person was there for years and then wasn't being called upon. So we canceled her being an employee and now we're reappointing her as employee. I make a motion to appoint Carol Harkel Road as part-time clerk to the justice court effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one at seventeen dollars per hour for up to fifteen hours per week. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah?
I'd just like to point, I'd just like to point out something. We approved headcount for them for this job a long time ago. And I really commend the justice people because they really felt that with all the demands, they held off as long as they could till they had a really bona fide job defined for this person. So they in fact have saved us some money during the year. And now they're asking for what we already committed a long time ago. And it really is prudent and necessary. And I, I just thank them for that. I mean, it, it, they could've hired somebody a long time ago, but it did save us some money. So that's it.
Okay, thank you all. Okay.
I make a mo, I make a motion to appoint Margaret Pierpont to the CAC for a term of office of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Uh, this is a partial one-year term because she will be appointed to a full term on January first.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Did we vote on the other one or did I interrupt?
I don't think we voted on, uh, Carol Harkel.
Oh, we didn't? Okay, okay, Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Talking about resignations and appointments, um, we got an email, you and I, Ray, about three weeks ago for someone for the planning board and, uh, I wanted to know what was going on with that.
Which person? There were two of them.
Steve Brady.
The guy in Ruski Lane?
Yes.
He doesn't live in town.
He lives on Ruski Lane.
No, he doesn't. That's just vacant land. There's no house. No place to live. He lives Hyde Park or someplace.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't see a response, so I didn't know what was going on with it.
Well, hey, when, when I have no secretary and I have no clerk.
Did you respond to him?
No, not yet.
Oh, then I'll respond to him.
Uh, I can send him a letter, cause I, so I asked.
Think we should respond to him, so.
Oh, yeah. And there's a lot of things that should be done, but we don't have, I don't have the staff to do all the stuff. It's a little overwhelming. Okay, anything more there under that? Then I'd like to go into the supervisor secretary discussion and see where we go. Um, as the town board is aware, I had my secretary resigned two months ago since she wanted more pay. I have located a person willing to be my secretary who has worked in governmental and business activities for over nine years. And I'm just taking a snapshot of town, time. She's actually been in business, I mean, working more than that. The duties required working with Duchess County HR, the benefits administrator, doing payroll, personnel file maintenance, doing workers' compensation. payroll, personnel file maintenance, doing workers' compensation benefits administrator, doing payroll, personnel files maintenance, doing workers' compensation filing and follow-up, doing the required annual audits for other agencies, which we do at least two to three a year. Um, computer familiar with especially Word, Excel, and Internet, currently is a notary, and other new tasks as assigned. These are the same requirements for my secretary. I requested a twenty-five dollar an hour pay for this full-time executive secretary position with medical benefits. Now, I know there's been a lot of chit-chat and discussion and everything else. Uh, what are we gonna do? Uh-
I thought we already discussed this at our, our, our pre-budget meeting about wages, that it was twenty-one dollars, and, and we already discussed that at the, at the last meeting.
So, in other words, you're saying not hire her?
Well, I, I'm saying that we, we offer a position and the person takes the position. We don't offer a salary based on the person.
Okay.
Our, our problem here is that in this position, it is, uh, and as, as Ray described it, an executive secretary. Um, and we can, we can not find a person willing to take this job.
Qualified person.
That's qualified.
That's right.
For this amount of money.
It's kind of a problem in the total environment that we're in right now. Like I said, town of Akipsey, executive secretary to the supervisors, getting twenty-one dollars an hour. So, I mean-
And I'm sure that job-
That's the going rate. I mean-
But let me, let me say, say this. In the town of Akipsey, I gotta believe they also have a bookkeeper or a, um-
Lots of staff.
They have a human resources department?
HR, yeah.
Yeah.
That does, that does all the accounting and account, so on.
You're gonna make a big snowball here.
Well, I, I know, but, but-
So-
I'm not saying we need to pay what Ray is saying. I'm simply saying we need to recognize when we're looking at a position, that we're not always comparing apples to apples, okay? Most of the towns have an accountant that does a lot of their payroll and so on.
We have an accountant.
We, the, the only thing she does is she cuts the checks and so on. Most of that accounting is done right here outside of Ray's office. So, I, I just, I'm not arguing either way. I'm just saying be aware when you make comparisons, that the comparisons are not real.
What you do here, you're gonna have to apply the same thing across the board. It's gotta be a snowball.
So, here, here's, I mean, obviously, we've all had some sort of conversation regarding this, uh, on this. And one of the things going back, some people might have not seen on our, uh, budgetary meeting on salaries last week, um, you know, the fir, the first issue is, we've had freezes on salaries for years and trying to get people back up. So, Dean and myself spoke about, and we brought it to the board last week. One, we're trying to get salaries back. Now, we're trying to stay within the constraints of the budget, and we're trying to keep the, you know, the, the budget on course. We're, we're in agreement set to fact that we have to get, we're having a tough time getting the right people to do the job, and we're trying to deal with employees that have been here a long time, so they're kinda falling to the backside. My concern, and I kinda, I think it mirrors Dean a little bit, to the point where we're trying to come up with rates and the, we, we got us higher on base on the position, not on the person. The question is, what does the rate for that person cost the town? We, for years, we started getting into the position, and definitely at least for the past, almost going on a year and nine months that I've been on the board, we've been trying to make changes for different positions and bringing salaries up. Instead of doing it, working out a whole plan, we're opening up Pandora's Box. And the problem with that is we're doing a knee-jerk reaction because our back's up against the wall, and we're putting a number on it, not, and we're starting to look at the person rather than the job to do it. And Nancy, there is truth, I'm sorry, not, Nancy has truth to it. The positions do have to be kind of, when we start talking about, across the board, are we comparing apples with apples or apples with oranges? My one concern for next year for the budget and the way to address some of the concerns on what is really needed for that position is, we can outsource doing payroll, and we're in the budgetary process, so we can start talking about that for what, we can outsource through a company that does municipal, uh, payroll and, 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 uh, benefits and stuff like that, just so I'm gonna use, like I use for my business, ADP, and they have a fee which is a fraction of the cost of what it has. So, some of that stuff can be taken away that, and there are companies that do for municipalities. So, my concern was when I was approached by Mike today, and, you know, originally it was at twenty-three fifty, and, and I said, alright, well, maybe we can work something out because there's certain special training. I don't know if I can get quite there, but I says, we can have a discussion on it. Then I find out after the fact it's twenty-five, and then it was, we're gonna give her twenty-three fifty for the rest of the year, and then gonna give her twenty-five coming next year based on principle, and, and we're not, and that's going for the person and not the position on that. Now, I do recognize the fact that it is tough to hire people in this day and age. I do think there's issues trying to get people. I don't know why. I mean, if with unemployment the way it is, we think we'd be able to get it, but we can't. Um, the, the problem though is, it is a slope, a, a slope that we wanna be very careful in, because here's the other part of the problem. We made, anyone who does know the salary, the projected salaries, what we're trying to do with everyone last week, and when we get to the budget, when we start looking at, if we're over that tax cap, and this year's gonna be one unquestionable year, is that if anything's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. So, when we're, we made that motion, I mean, there's a potential, and we have to have this talk, this discussion, because we can't keep kicking the barrel down the line, and that's what we've been doing. So, now we have all these people out of whack that should've been being addressed for a long time, not the people, but the position, and then the people that have been kinda doing the work. So, we set a precedent for twenty-five dollars an hour, and we come in there, and then we have to make some cuts, and if we have to go back on the regular budgetary, that we wanna increase our existing personnel that have been with us and that have been there, and then there's a big discrepancy. And then we have this person making, basically with benefits, the most next to the bill, you know, proposed building inspector and zoning enforcement officer, which a lot of towns, I will say with that, they're starting to sell them out where the salaries are going a lot higher than where we're at with it. So, I believe on looking at the job, but I think we gotta have some sort of consistency, and before we start opening this up, and I always say if our back's up against the wall, sometimes something comes out from behind it, and we're not doing it on a knee-jerk reaction. So, I think that's the conversation. Where Ray, I understand he feel, you know, Ray's in a tight spot too, and I'm gonna give him a little shade on this too, because he's trying to do the budget, and the budget is a very time-consuming part, you know, of this time of year. So, he's trying to deal with the day-to-day operations with the budget, so he's kinda getting back on, you know, behind track. Now, I wanna give us a little, uh, thanks to Carol and Mary also, because they have been helping out in that position, uh, of, you know, helping Ray out with do some of these duties, payroll and stuff like that. So, that's a major, uh, help there. But I think we're on a very slippery slope when we start talking this, and then we're gonna go back to our, what we, what we originally talked about, and then if we gotta start cutting, figuring ways to shave that budget down, and then all of a sudden, we shaved someone's salary that we were looking at trying to do, and then this person's already guaranteed a job at twenty-five bucks an hour. So, that's my suggestion. I'm gonna stop.
It's very simple to me. I've been in office six years. I've had a new secretary every year for six years, and they all quit because they weren't getting paid. Some of them went at full-time, and they wouldn't even, the board wouldn't give full-time. So, at this point, I bring it up. I only have till the end of the year. If we don't get resolution of this, you're not gonna get everything done. Things are gonna pile up, and there's no guarantee we'll meet all the deadlines we have to, because I won't have a clerk. I mean, a secretary. And, uh, I don't think they're gonna be miraculously appearing in the next two months, or next month or something. We've been out there beating the bushes.
As, as a temporary fix, have you called any of the staffing agencies to see what they would have to offer?
Because then I gotta do all the training.
Right. I mean, a lot of these staffing agencies, the people transition over to full-time, you know, from being just a part-time temporary staffer-
Yeah.
-to being a full-time worker. In this way, you kinda feel them out to see if they're even qualified. But I'm just offering it as a, as a potential solution-
No, I do-
-for your immediate need. That's all.
So, I would say, for one, while it's a fine enough idea, we don't need temporary solutions. We need to fix, we need to find the solution to this. It's been going on for however many years over, before I was on the board. Um, when it comes, I wanna answer the position as opposed to the person thing. When we had our meeting last week, I came in saying twenty-five dollars an hour for that position, because that's what it's worth. I was quickly outvoted, so it didn't even turn into a, a conversation. But we're finding out through the people that are applying for this job, twenty-five dollars an hour, that's what it is. Um, I, I know we don't like that, but it doesn't change the fact that people are not going to take the job for less.
Well, we're ready to pay everybody else twenty-five dollars an hour.
Well, that's the other part of the conversation we need to have. Not everyone is the same. That's the problem with the twenty-one dollars across the board. Not every job is the same. This is the only executive secretary in town that does every single department. We have one for the Highway Department. We have ones for the Justice Department, ones for zoning and planning, but this person handles the entire town. It is a different job.
It is. You know, when, when, when we start talking difference, we had, one of the other
things, anyone who was here, really, I don't know too many people were here from the meeting last week. We had different departments. They're fighting in between themselves on who is more important. We had basically, you know, saying, you know, the Justice Department saying their clerks are more important because they're handling money than with the Highway Department or, or Building Department. All our positions, on these positions, we can all say they all have to deal with money indirectly or out, you know, directly or indirectly. And, you know, let it be with getting chips back in and, and money back from the highway to the courts, bringing revenue, and that way, the Building Department making sure that the building, uh, forms are filled out and following up for the assessments. Um, you know, I think there's ways to get something, a, a balance on there. I do think there's certain HR responsibilities and training that are needed in that department. My other concern that I have with the supervisor secretary as a whole is that position is an appointed position, which it's been that way, and for, there's a few different reasons, but I'm not gonna get into them right now.
By HR requirement. If you use that position, that's the way-
No, no, I, I understand that. The problem, what we have, if we start creating that position, and we're basing, right now basing off of what this person's saying, which I haven't even seen her resume, maybe she's, maybe she's very good. Um, but when we start basing that position of saying, you know, okay, we're gonna pay her this much, the next supervisor who ever comes in, every two years, someone else gets to reappoint that position. And if we're taking an investment and we're training someone, okay, which really is, should be a long-term position instead of being a short-term position, uh, for two years, it, it becomes a political play, a political position, which I have a fundamental problem. Now, I don't know the legality of it. I haven't gotten into that. So, there's a lot of different things to that position come in, and we, she may be very qualified, and the next person who comes in behind her is not qualified, that's getting that salary which was already established. And that's the fundamental problem with that, and that's when, you know, where we're trying to come up with a, a salary based on the job rather than the person, and then we have, we can get into longevity pay and everything else that kinda goes along with it to keep people moving upward, instead of feeling a new person's coming in and saying, I make X amount of dollars, and you just hire someone and that takes more of me, and I've been here for several years. I'm-
One quick dumb question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
No, 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 no.
Off that public eye.
Not public comment.
You can do your public comment.
A bonus?
Nope.
So, that's, that, that's the fundamental problem that we're, we're at here. You know, so there, it's, it's, it's gonna have long plays. And right now, the only two people that are gonna be, that are guaranteed to be on this board for next year is, and, and, you know, maybe Mike, you become a supervisor, maybe not. But the two people that are guaranteed that are gonna have to still deal with these issues that are with employees is Dean and myself. And as much as it's a hard decision, sometimes real leadership has to make the, not the most common decision, but, and the hard decision, but we have to stand by it, and, and we gotta roll with the consequences. Sometimes it's a good consequence, and sometimes it's bad. We need it to cut down. And I'm trying, I'm not, it's not to cut the person down or the position down. It's about coming to, is, is the number maybe a little bit more than twenty-one bucks an hour for that position? That's a discussion I'm willing to have, and there's different positions. But we gotta set the, the pay based on the position, in this case, not on the person, because we can't get anyone.
I don't think we're gonna resolve this tonight. However-
Could you speak a little louder, Nancy? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, I don't think we're gonna resolve this tonight. However, I did give you the list of everything she does. If you, as individuals and then collectively as a board, we look at this, okay? There's a lot of things on here that are not in somebody else, that's other clerical job. Compliance, compliance with PERMA, compliance with the state controlling, compliant, this is municipal compliance, not justice court compliance, okay? I'm not saying twenty, I'm arguing twenty-five, twenty-three, whatever. I'm just saying the position is much more involved and much more, um, germane to this community, okay? Compliance for the Department of Labor, compliance for humans' resources, compliance for New York State Retirement, for everybody. So, that is a job, in my opinion, that's elevated over the clerical job for a particular jo, you know, department.
There's special training that goes with that and requirements, I understand.
In, in the debating of this, you gotta take that into consideration and say, in our opinion, is this job worth more than everybody else's twenty-one dollars an hour, or is it not? Then we pay again for what we think the job is, not for the qualifications of the individual we're trying to hire. That's it.
And that's a fair debate to have. That's a fair, you know, I'm, I'm fine with looking into, you know, the, the position because there is certain training and stuff that requires that, you know, being a notary. Yeah, you know, I mean, all this little stuff, I'm just saying that as, as one part of it. Does make a difference. The question is, that's become, the twenty-five dollar an hour figure for that position is a big difference. It's, it's a, we're given, and on top of it being a full-time position, when we are increasing, you know, plans is to increase the supervisor's salary for the time and from what it used to be, because most of, just so everyone understands, it's not that anyone's trying to take a pay raise. We are the lowest in two counties on what the salaries are to trying to get people even to be involved in it. And many years ago, when these buildings and there was cuts on it, the board seats took a twenty-five percent, was it twenty-five percent, Dean? There's a twenty-five percent cut that still is not even nowhere where it was ten years ago, okay? So, we do it because we care about the community, but we gotta have qualified people to do stuff too. So, supervisor's gonna come up a little bit, you know, we're looking at, which we, we're trying to do it in, in a two-step process from last year, we're looking at, and that was supposed to be for the time. Now, if we have to go through, what I will say, we can use some of that ARC money for that American Rescue Funds this year, and which I do think it would be a reasonable thing since, uh, Mary and Carol have picked up this lack, which I am very grateful for. I mean, it's, you know, they got their full schedule too, is to do some sort of bonus because they have, and we can use some of that money for that. We have the ability to use some of that for this year if we gotta make a real plan to figure it for next year. But I think we'll find someone, if we can have a real meeting of the minds and figure out a, a, a real number, and then we can start marketing it.
Well, what I would say is, we are currently already two months behind in the supervisor's office because the position has been open for two months, and this, this affects everything that's happening in town, including most importantly, the budget. But on top of that, with Carol and Mary covering, it's affecting now the clerk's office, because they're gonna fall behind on things as they're trying to cover things in the supervisor's office. And so, I, while I appreciate everybody's thoughts, I don't wanna hear about, let's kick this down the road and have another meeting next week and figure out what this is. We should sit here until we're done and figure out what we can offer a person now.
Well, then I'm fine having that conversation.
I mean, for me, it's twenty-five, but certainly I'm, I'm willing to go down. I'm, you're saying you're willing to go up from the twenty-one? Let's figure it out, so that we know at least what we can offer a person. I mean, it's difficult for Ray to take in resumes and interview people when he can't even tell them what he's going to pay them.
Well, I, that, that I, well, we did tell, you know, we did have a plan last week, unfortunately.
Yeah, I told him.
You got one, you got one person that came in for an interview. Is that the only person that's on the table, just so, so I know?
Well, I had one from North Carolina.
Yeah, well, I-
I don't know how that came, but that one came. And I had another one who is basically just out of high school kinda thing, or early college. I mean, they have no experience. So, that's it. So, yeah-
And how did we, how, how did we advertise? I'm just curious.
I've done it at town board meetings. I put it in the newspaper. We put it on the webpage.
Just, 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 yeah, just so everyone knows, I'm-
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, put it out. So, you know, in, in essence, okay, this is not going to affect me anymore. I am just not going to do things because I don't have time to do them. And things are going to fall behind, for example, right now, we are almost two months behind on the retirement.
So...
So people's retirement information is not going to Albany.
All right, so let, let me, let me, let me ask you this, Ray, then, I'm going to, I'm going, because I'm, I'm a problem solver, and we're going to try to, I'm willing to sit here till whatever everyone wants to sit and have a conversation on us. If we have someone and, and we're able to work out, you know, obviously the payroll stuff, and we can work out something, you know, with the other two people who've been helping, which I just named them, you know, Carol and Mary in that department, and we get someone else that's maybe, I don't, and I'm, I, I have an idea of who you're saying as a younger person for the time being, so we can get through this process, and maybe that person provides to be good, I don't know. And to start taking some of the weight off, so some stuff gets done, is that a possibility?
It essentially says, I got to stop doing the budget to train the new person, and the new person that you're talking about has no experience.
I just, this is the first time I've heard about that person, so I'm just...
Yeah, I'm just saying, they don't have experience. This is not a simple thing to jump into. I've done it for six years, and I said, enough's enough. You guys, you know what? I'm gone, the end of the year, you're going to live with us on the first of January, what are you going to do? You won't have a person there that's trained at all, and I feel it's going to be the blind leading the blind trying to move the operation ahead, and...
You know, one thing I learned in business, Ray?
Yeah, everybody's replaceable.
Everybody's replaceable.
That's right.
To the point, I've, I've, every time I felt my back was up against the wall, and I used to have twenty-plus employees, and I sat there and I never, and I, the day I finally realized that they're going to think they're going to hold their back over my head, I can get back out there and I'll find a way to make it happen, and we got a board up here, we got, you know, between right now and for next year going in, there are two people that have business experience on their hands how to handle this. The problem with government that I found out, unfortunately, I understand it's a slow process, and there's legal realm, and we got to do all things by the, dot the Ts and, or dot the Is and cross the Ts, you know, but there are ways around it. When people say, this is the way it's been done for years, is not necessarily the best way. We find ourselves back, going back and forth, and then we're going to end ourselves in trouble every time. You know, I, what I'm looking at is the fact of, when we start looking at creating discourse within everyone else raising that salary, so the question is, what is a salary that's reasonable? We're basing it off of this one woman who comes in for, or this one person, if it's a woman, I assume it is.
I've talked to other people.
Okay, but came in there, and, and from the first conversation, had twenty-three-fifty. I spoke to Mike, I said, okay, maybe we can kind of get somewhere close to that, maybe we can figure out. And then I was, which I still had tough reservations at, even at that, for that, because it's, but I always said, if we can justify the work, and, and, and it's for the position, and I hear she says, oh, we'll come in at twenty-three-fifty, but you got to guarantee me, this is a guarantee, you got to, we don't even have the budget down, we can't even figure the guarantee, but we're going to guarantee that person's going to get twenty-five dollars an hour come January first, when we got other people that are probably not going to get a hundred percent. I hope we can do that for our employees, but a hundred percent of that, and then it's going to even cut it, and then it's going to stretch that difference that much further. So, anyone else have any suggestions? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm talking a lot, I talk a lot.
Well, I ordered immediate solution for an immediate need, which is to call up and get a temporary staffing help, so that we're not putting two months' worth of back stuff in a pile. You've had this immediate need, I mean, we could have addressed that two months ago.
Well, there's certain things, you're right, there's certain things that a good, skilled person could come in and pick up. They don't need all of the, the technical background to do that, that would help.
And this way, we're not under the gun, at least we have somebody to fill the position until we find someone to fill it full-time.
I'm sure it's not twenty-five dollars, probably around forty dollars an hour.
Well, unless we call, we don't know.
Yeah, I agree, but I'm looking at it the other way.
But, but it's a temporary position for that.
A temp will cost twice as much.
You could call them in one day and say, don't come in the next, I mean, it's...
A temp will cost twice as much, but it's only for a matter of a few...
And I actually did that many years ago, going back, maybe eighteen years ago, where I brought in, I let go, almost for different reasons, which I won't get into, a whole office of people, and I brought in temps, by Monday I had four temps come in, and I found a solution, ran a several million dollar business, and was able to get through the next few weeks, and I made it happen. So Dean's idea, I, right now, I like that idea. For the time being, it gets immediate, and then we can find, then we can sit down and really figure out the nuts and bolts, which I'm about, and if it's truly about bringing it up a couple bucks an hour, I can get there at that point, but right now, we're going to be knee-jerk, 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 kicking it.
Let me, let me propose something, and I don't know if this is even allowed. I know when we have dilemmas like this, we go into an executive session. We cannot go into an accession, executive session on salary, I understand that, but we can, I would think, go into an executive session on the job value, job description, whatever, to see what the worth of the job is and have some kind of an agreement with ourselves, and this could be done very quickly, I believe, so that we can base whether we think more than twenty-one dollars an hour is warranted because we all agree the value of the job is not typical of everyone else's or not, I mean, maybe that's a start, I don't know, but right now, we're within a rock and a hard place, and the busiest time of the year is the next few months and into January and February, and Carol and Mary are going to be, at some point, so busy with the work that they have to do, that they're not going to be available either. So we have got to come to some kind of a decision.
So the question, Nancy, I have then, say hypothetically, we came up to what was the original, what we were approached originally today with that twenty-three-fifty, I'm just being hypothetical, this person will only take it based on the fact that they're going to get twenty-five come January.
Well, then this is not the person for the job.
But that's my point, so by tomorrow, we're still not going to have someone that's going to potentially take that job, right? So we're, we're trying to base that twenty-five for one person that we just put out and, and try to start figuring stuff out. So if we said twenty-three-fifty, we don't even have that person, maybe helps out getting someone else, but that may take weeks. I've had, I, I've had ads out for, help for my business for months, and I paid top dollar, full benefits. So, I mean, that doesn't guarantee you the numbers, so the repercussions, so, you know, I mean, we can sit and figure out the, the costs, I mean, I guess that's reasonable to do, I mean, or, you know, what, what it's worth, and based on the stuff, but I don't think we're, we're trying to get this one person, I think that's Ray's intent was to get this one person, which does, from what I understand, and I haven't seen a resume, does seem qualified from some, from what I've been told, and I haven't seen the resume, but on this qualification.
There's a lot of this.
Yeah, for, for a lot of that, and, and, you know, but the question is, she, this person is leaving a position, from what I understand, there's other issues that are going on where she's working now, and I'm just, I'm like, I don't...
Don't even go there.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to say, so for whatever reason, it's coming here, and I'm saying it on me, so it's not on the board, it's on me. I'm just calling it for what it is. So we're making a change for the person, and it's not about the position. It's wrong.
Well, I want to say that, I, I know I spoke out against, I'm not against the temp idea. I think, you know, any person we hire may have to give notice at an old job, it may be a few weeks before somebody can come in anyway. I'm not against the temp idea, I think it's a...
It's a relief.
It's an end both situation. Do the temp idea, but we also need to come up with a salary that can be offered.
For the temp.
For, well, even for, while you're inter, while the temp is there, you're interviewing other people for the permanent position, we need to have a number.
We did come up a salary last week, which was twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
And prior to us coming up with the twenty-one, it was nineteen, so it's come up quite a bit since you were first looking for someone.
And it started out as a part-time, and then we brought it to full-time, so there's other stuff that went on over the past...
So a lot of things have changed in that two-month period, that the twenty-one may be advantageous to someone without offending the rest of the town.
Yeah, well, I see this very simple. We're not going to hire anybody for me for the rest of the year, okay? We can talk, we can have executive sessions and all, everybody says, oh, yeah, we got to jostle. Then you keep saying, well, we're going to have to cut salaries anyways to balance the budget. This salary will be cut.
Well, what I said was, I didn't say I don't want to, but that'd be the first thing, so we're giving them...
I'm just saying, you're going to cut salaries to make the budget balance, which is typically what's been done for years on the backs of the general fund employees, they are getting the cut in the salary.
First of all, before you, because you're throwing that, that that's going to happen, my goal, and, and I made it quite clear, unfortunately, the meeting last week was not televised, and unfortunately, didn't come through, I said we have to, and, and we always have to have, let it be with the highway, a one, a two, a five, and a ten-year plan. In our employees, we cut, and, and yes, you're right, it's always back on the general fund employees, that it was taken back on that, and that's not right. And I do think, as example, because I'm the, I'm the, probably the biggest, well, Dean, Dean is also a fiscal conservative on numbers, probably more than I am, but I'm pretty tight on my numbers when it comes down to budget. I don't want to raise taxes. It's the last thing we have to do, but I understand, just like when I first came in with the highway, buying two new trucks, I got the reputation for spending four-hundred-and-seventy-some thousand dollars in the first month or two of being elected here, but it was a, the investment for the town, and it was well worth it, and it has, it's been paying off ever since on the maintenance costs and the longevity. In the town, our investment is, are our people, and you're right, we got to have an investment in the people to have the right, we pay the people the right amount, or get them there over, and it may, and it may take two years to get to the point where we need to be, and I'm committed to that, and I'm going to lead by example, saying that it's, it's a tough decision, but we're going to sit there. But I also understand the need, we can't go a huge amount over that tax cap, so we're going to have to be fiscally responsible, we're going to cut, what we're going to try to do is cut from other areas that may not need to be cut, and we're going to put our people first. That's the goal, is put our people first. We're only as good as our people here, and then, you know, quite frankly, we're only as good, we're as good as our people, but they count on us on the board here to be, you know, to give them the, the tools that they need to succeed. That's, that's the first thing, in government, I learned, it's all, it's, it's about cutting the lower people and unfortunately, us up here. Now, I'm not saying we all do that, I mean, we, because I can say, for the most part, four of us on this board, over the past year and a half, have worked on a bipartisan level. I'm not saying you haven't all the time, Ray, but there's certain things that you give us the information at the end, the last eleventh hour, to make a decision. This year could have been sat, you could have approached us individually over the past couple days, and I, and not find out from one person that's coming back here saying, hey, we've got this going on, which now we're sitting here. Two months ago, when we lost Stephanie, I was on vacation, I didn't find out till the day before the meeting that she was not, no longer going to be in the town. As a board member, I'm one-fifth of the board, I should have the right to know that stuff, and not finding it the day before the meeting on air, and if there's an issue, we could have started addressing it then. So when, it comes down to being, who's, who's in charge as supervisor, is runs, is the CEO of this town, in essence, from the day-to-day operation.
So, that being said, we need to decide. If, if we are going to stick with what we said, twenty-one dollars an hour, then we need to, then this young woman, or whoever she is, is going to find employment somewhere else. If not, then we...
Well, she's going to find employment unless we pay twenty-five, so that's, that's what it is.
Well, I think the consensus is, we're not going to pay twenty-five. I don't know. To tell you the truth, if we voted tonight, I'd abstain, because I really don't agree with the, what's being talked about here, okay? So we need to determine what we're going to pay for the job, that's what you tell somebody. It's their decision whether they take it or not. Unfortunately, we've, none of us have seen the resume, but from what we understand, she's an excellent fit that would have to, not have as a lot of training, but if we're not, if the town can't afford to pay for it, then we make the decision and we look for somebody else, okay? And we have to pay the, the viper if they're not as well experienced or whatever, but we've got to make this decision, all right? And I, I don't know what else to do. We need, and then get a temp to at least do some of the, the things that they can do. I mean, Ray is in the, I mean, Ray's in a tight spot right now, he's got a lot of stuff that's overdue.
And that's why I said, a temp would be an immediate fix, right now.
And the town is going to suffer if some of these things aren't done, because Albany's going to be banging on our door, looking to find us, because we haven't done certain things.
And if they come down for an audit, we are going to be fully busy feeding them the information they want, so everything else goes awry.
This is more far-reaching than just local.
Yeah.
Okay? So we've got to make a decision. And, I mean, personally, I think the job is worth a little more than twenty-one, based on what I gave you tonight. I don't think we can say twenty-five. If no one agrees with me, then twenty-one is what it has to say, because that's what we talked about.
I mean, I do think, listen, I'm, I'm going to also come to, I'm going to bring myself down a little bit here, too. I, I mean, knowing what's on this paper here, it is worth a little bit more than twenty-one. I'm, I'm not going to say it's not. There, there are certain things dealing with the state, and, you know, the IRS stuff, and there, there is stuff in there, I can't get to twenty-five, there's no, no way that's going to happen. There's no, there's no way, and, and, but, but I'm willing to find a reasonable solution to start someone for this position, and my, like I said, my only really big concern is, this person we get, someone who we're getting, it's a two-year deal, that's what scares me the most out of anything, we're going to be retraining every two, two years if someone doesn't like the personality of it.
We're retraining every year right now.
So we're doing every year now.
We want to try to get beyond that, we want to get beyond that.
So, so, the real thing we're talking about right now is the wage we're going to pay until December thirty-first. We still have a budget to work out, and then we'll figure out that wage from January first on.
But we can't make promises.
I, I understand, so...
It's not fair to the person to be hired for two months as a full-time employee and then say, oh, well, we're not going to pay you anymore, and they got to resign, and now they got to find another job. That's totally unfair.
I, I agree. But clearly, we're not, we're not going to get to the twenty-five, I would happily say twenty-three-fifty, twenty-four, whatever, if we can at least get you a number so that you can start interviewing somebody, and if we have to do a temp in the meantime, fine, but we can do both things.
Well, it just takes more time.
But I don't think, whatever decision we make, if we can make one, I don't think we need to make a promise if it's less than what someone thinks it's worth. We don't make a promise for next year because we can't. And, I mean, when I take a job, all right, here's, here's the job, here's the money, here it is, you take it, you interview, you take it, or you leave it, okay? And I think that's the way it has to be here. We make a decision, and if this individual, if we lose this individual because it's not meant that she's going to work for less, then maybe it was in the cards that we shouldn't have hired her, because she may not stay anyway, okay? And we've, Ray, you've been living with that forever.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? So, but we got to make a decision, so...
So, as I said, we're not, we're not going to do anything, basically. Yeah, I'll call Kelly girls and see what they can do.
Well, I think in addition to whether we hire somebody or not, you maybe, maybe for the next few months, you get some extra help.
Yeah, I get extra help, I get extra burden. It's a training process.
No, 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 right, there's certain things, a, a good, skilled clerical person can come in with very little explanation, and you tell them, I need this, this, and this, and they can pick it up and do it. I'm not saying they're going to do some of the...
Yes, for someone who has payroll and human resource background, and, and they can take care of two-thirds of this.
All you have to do is tell the, the hiring agent the skills you're looking for, and they'll give you somebody. So there's not a lot of training.
You might find someone that's able within that.
Where the training's going to come in is the requirements from the state.
As a permanent thesis, I mean...
Okay.
Okay. Well, call them up and see what they can offer.
But I'm saying, while we're, and make a decision, so we have both going on, all I should have brought my lunch.
No, it's not martini time. No, it's not martini time.
Dean, let's.
Pass that.
Dean, let me ask you something. I mean, I wanna get your input, because, you know, obviously, we both have a lot of business experience and stuff like this, and, and working with law offices. What do you, do you see something in, in this here that, I mean, you know, that warrants a little more?
Listen, we, we talked about the court clerks having to have specialized training, and we agreed to twenty-two. So if you wanted to say twenty-two, because they had equally different, but specialized training that was required, I, I could get there. But twenty-three, fifty, five, twenty-five dollars, we're gonna insult the rest of the town, I'm not gonna do that. I think everybody is valuable in this town, and I don't wanna pick and choose who's more valuable. Sorry, I just don't, I can't get there.
I, I, you know, I do, I do agree with that, I think it's, there's multiple chains, I mean, I can definitely come up. I, 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 what I, what I would suggest is this, I. Why don't we get on the phone, get, get the, get the temp, let's really sit down and look at it, I wanna sit and, and, I wanna go through this list a little bit. And I wanna see what we can get, you know, for a temp on that, and then we can really sit and see what the rest of the market's doing. I think that's, that's, that's the fair thing for the job, not about the person. And maybe it is twenty-three bucks, I don't know, I, you know, I mean, it's, look, in, in the public sector, if this was a public sector job, this, this would be twenty-three, fifty, all day long, I'm not.
When we came up with the twenty-one and twenty-two number, both Michael and Nancy had done a scan of the towns around us.
Right.
So, the number wasn't that far off.
I can show you the sheet that I brought that said twenty-five for this position.
It was in range.
Because that's what I had on my sheet.
Well, we didn't get to hear, we, unfortunately, we didn't talk about that. So what was the town, just out of curiosity, what was your?
I, I don't have the sheet with me, but.
Off the top of your head.
I had, I had put twenty-five for this position. But it was clear, I mean, you know, I'm, I know what it's like to be in the minority, I'm, I've been there for four years. So I knew that twenty-five wasn't gonna happen, so, you know.
Minority, it's not a.
Twenty-one's gonna happen.
I don't think that's a fair statement, Michael.
Well, I mean, no, but I mean, I knew that if I said twenty-five, I could tell from the conversation we were having, twenty-five wasn't gonna happen, so I don't go for it, I don't make that argument, but I, now, I'm seeing.
What we need to concentrate on is the amount of responsibility related to this job that is over and above the local responsibility. The accountability at the state level, which has.
Yeah.
Value, okay? Does the justice court do that? Yeah, they're accountable for their piece, but this is accountable in so many areas, okay? And the, and the town depends on being a viable town as a result of this being done properly.
You and I are in a hundred percent agreement.
So, does that, my question to everyone here, does that add enough value to consider reconsidering what we think the job is worth?
I certainly think so.
Okay? It doesn't have to be twenty-five, or whatever, I'm just asking, make that decision first, and then decide what you think is affordable, or whatever. That's, I can't, I can't make it flainer than that, so. So where do we go from here?
Well, I'll call the.
Can we call an executive session on the job?
Sure, just another day of meeting, that's all.
Well, we, we need the information as far as.
And would we be able to see, I, I know that this is very specific, would we be able to see the resume of the people that have applied?
No, because the person hasn't resigned.
I, well, can we keep it confidential?
You can take their name off.
Take the name off, I don't care.
Yeah, there you go.
Just qualifications.
I'll see if I can sanitize it.
We don't need the name. It might help.
Again, I, I've.
But from what I hear.
Graduated a little, twenty-two, I mean, you guys, I'm only one-fifth of the persons, so you can, guys can make whatever decisions you want. Again, you know, we start picking and choosing, we're gonna insult the rest of the town, and we're gonna have a revolt.
Well.
And then we're not trying to just replace one position, but maybe three others.
We've been picking and choosing when we went through that list, okay? It's either fifteen, thirty, or twenty-one. That's basically the set of numbers, no matter what they did, whether they're gate guards, or lifeguards, or whatever.
No, but we said the clerk, the clerk position is what we were.
It's twenty-one, no matter what the clerk is.
Twenty-one with the exception of the justice.
This is not a clerk, this is a secretary to the supervisor, confidential secretary. But in your view, it's a clerk, it's not by HR standards, but.
Well, we put the same value with Melissa's position, same, you know, same thing, and there's, she has reporting the state, there's obviously environmental issues and stuff that go on there. This, I think, there is a little bit, I, I will, I will say there's a little bit of stuff in here that's, you know, with the, you know, I'm looking at the IRS, uh, compliance issues.
Oh, yeah.
Um, there, there are certain things that are, I think, you, you gotta have certain knowledge of, and certain training, you know, that's, I can definitely say, that's why I'm willing to go up a little bit more for that, I think there, there is a, a few things that.
Going twenty-three once, twenty-three twice.
I, I'm, I'm not quite at twenty-three. I, I was close, up until the point when I felt today, that it was, it was twenty-three, fifty, and then all of a sudden, it went up to twenty-five, and I felt, I felt that kinda erated the, the face on that one.
Well, let me suggest this, then. Reach out to the temp agency.
Yeah.
I think we all agree we need help. You tell them the skills you need, they will furnish you with the skills. So you look at the, the most critical pieces right now that you need attention on, and you tell them, these are the skills, send me somebody, okay? And for a little while, it's gonna cost us a whole lot more than twenty-five dollars an hour.
Oh, I know, probably forty, fifty, I don't know.
Guaranteed, but it'll be relief. We step back, maybe have some kind of a session where we debate about whether this is, the value of this compared to everybody else, and do it quick, fast, and then come up with a number, decide, and that's it, okay? I don't know what else to suggest.
And that'll be the end of the year.
We're getting nowhere here.
So it's, essentially, as I see it, it's a next-year problem, it's not a this-year problem anymore. We're running out of time.
Yeah, but you gotta get to next year. Right now, next year is.
You're just gonna have a lot of paper to go through.
Yeah.
In between, because I can't do it all.
That, is that palatable, that suggestion?
Yeah.
What do you think?
The only option we have at the moment.
We're not gonna decide tonight.
Like I said, even if, even if we raise the salary up, it's not gonna make a difference for this person, I think that's, I think that's the ending thing, we're, we're shooting for the person, not, not the job.
And Carol has graciously been doing a lot, so if you get somebody in, in the interim with some, the skills they need, I mean, Carol maybe can spend a little time giving him some direction, not doing the job, okay? Just to get us over the hump.
Yeah, I'm supporting number one.
Right.
I mean, I took vacation, so it put Ray a little bit back.
Right.
I had prepped my office to go on vacation.
Right.
But not his.
Right.
So, now the board meetings, so we're just a little bit behind, but, you know, my goal is to catch up, but I do agree with Mike and Ray, I think the quality of that job is above the other clerks. I've done it myself, I work with them, but it's up to you, you all decide what you wanna pay, but a clerk is not a clerk, is not a clerk.
Uh-huh. Nope.
Okay, let's finish this.
I'm just gonna say, I can get to, this is where I, I think my top on here, looking at, going to review on this, for this position, and, and this is strictly this position.
Let's save this for the next year.
Yeah, let me save, because, because, you know, the more and more I look at it, I wanna, I wanna sit, and I wanna have an educated decision on this one, not, not a knee-jerk reaction, I wanna do a little research on here. I, I agree, I don't, I don't want, maybe it's worth more, maybe it's not.
Okay, so we'll move on, I'll call a temp agency and see what I can find out, independent of whatever the cost is. Or do you wanna review the cost before I make a commitment?
Be very specific, as to what you need. More specific you are, the more better quality person you're gonna get.
He's asking the cost of the temp agency, if it's seventy dollars an hour, I mean, do you guys wanna approve, what do we have to approve here?
It might, it might be forty dollars worth an hour, but that.
Whatever it is, we're gonna have to approve it.
Yeah, okay.
But.
We'll just delay it until I get the information.
But the position we're in right now.
Yeah.
We need to do something.
Yes.
Right? So, I mean, we can approve, I don't, do we wanna approve something now?
For, for a temp, for a temp here?
We're shooting in the dark, let's find out.
I have no idea what it is.
Let me, let me ask you, the, the person that we have right now, as far as doing, doing, um, the, the other person, without saying names, what is the experience that other person has for the time being?
I told you what all the experience was.
Okay.
I just read it off to you.
Sometimes someone young is looking to, to make a name and to, to grow into something, sometimes it's not a bad.
This person has nine years' worth of doing this kinda job. The only thing she'll have to learn is passwords for retirement, and passwords for this and that, that we, we do, so.
The person that has done HR stuff, right?
Yep, yep, with the county.
Yeah, with the county.
Yeah, so she knows how to deal with them, but you get a new person, I tell you, it's a challenge. I've been doing it for, since ninety-two, and it's getting more and more difficult, but I don't worry about it anymore. So, I'll get you the number, tell you what it is, and you decide, can we hire him or not? Because you gotta, gotta sign a contract, and we'll go from there.
Yes, I do. Right?
Well, once I get some information from him, see what it is.
Well, you do, tell him what you want.
I understand, but they give you a contract.
Yeah.
Generally, there's a contract, and the board's gotta sign a contract, so we all gotta meet sometime to agree on the contract.
But the temp agencies are there to do this very quickly, that's their, that's, that's their mode of operation, so.
I agree, but the point is, we approve contracts.
I worked for a temp agency, you know?
We approve the contracts.
Coming out of emergency meeting to do it.
Just, yeah, I'm just saying.
I'll make myself available.
I'll keep my schedule open.
I'll keep my schedule open.
My schedule gets filled, independent of me.
Make it happen.
Okay, so I'll let you know that, and we'll see where we go. Okay, let's move on to warrants.
Take a motion to approve the following resolution, be resolved, the town board approves the September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one general fund warrant, vouchers number three hundred and eighty through four hundred and thirty-two, totaling fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, sixty-five cents, and the September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one highway fund warrant, vouchers number one seventy-six through two oh four, totaling fifty-three thousand nine eighty-three and thirty-eight cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion, is the move funds to balance the, the current budget. I make the motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board approves the resolution of twenty-twenty-one, a resolution to move funds at the September fourteen, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is the supervisor's report, I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board approves the final supervisor's report for August twenty-twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried. Okay, the next thing is a public discussion, does anyone wanna say anything now on town board matters at all? I mean, okay, I'll open it up, I just wanted to verify, that's all. I make a motion, open the meeting to public discussion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, please come up to the microphone, state your name, your street address, and try to talk for less than three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Kerry Bell, and my family owns the house on the corner of Center and Fiddler's Bridge Road, the old house that's right next to the store.
Okay.
And we have a problem, which I had brought to the attention of some of the officials here in town, but the problem continues, there periodically, and not when it's always raining, we get gushes of water that's coming down from the pond, I, next to that house that used to be a group home. And earlier in the summer, we, when I first mentioned this, I was told that there were chipmunks who had built a dam, not chipmunks, beavers. And that's why there was no water coming down, and that the town, I was, well, there was some question about who opened up that pond, but at that point, the water just gushed down, it was like an ocean, that went out of the stream bed in my backyard, that stream cuts across my yard, then goes behind the store, and on down to the creek, where they're building the new bridge. But, so I could understand that, that that happened at that time, but since then, the water comes down at unpredictable times. Like, for example, we had the big rainstorm, and I expected that water would be coming down, but yesterday, in the middle of a sunny day, all of a sudden, my backyard is like a river, comes in, it goes out of the stream bed, and it brings a bunch of debris, smelly stuff, garbage, I, I don't know who's putting food into that, but, yeah, it's unsanitary, what's coming out. Now, the only thing that has been different, I think, is last summer, there was a project working on the culvert underneath Center Road. By my house, and no one spoke to me about it, as the owner of that house, they were working there for several weeks, and I have a feeling that somehow the culver that goes under the road, this is, I'm thinking it must have been enlarged, because now, as I said, I'm repeating myself, I have this flood, and it's unsanitary, and it's affecting the value of my property. And also, I know the owners of the store, it's happening to them also, and I, it just mentioned it, I was talking to someone about this, and one of the workers on the bridge reconstruction said to me, I asked that person, oh, when are you on schedule? And he said, no, because we keep getting rivers of water coming down, which are preventing us from doing what we have to do. And, you know, so the water is building up as it goes down, and, and I, you know, this is not my problem, but apparently, they're noticing that the water is coming down. When that system works properly, the water, it was like a gentle stream, and in fact, we, you know, was one of the nice things about the property, well, we have this meandering stream in the backyard, but we can no longer point that out as, as an advantage. So I'm not sure what you can do about it, but I want you to be aware of it, and, and if someone could advise me how to proceed, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
So have, have you called the highway department?
I have, yes.
Because our highway superintendent's right here, so I would suggest maybe talking with him after the meeting, and then see what we can do.
Yeah, I mean, when I first brought it to the attention of the town, I was told that the town had nothing to do with that pond, that I should get in contact with the owners of that property, who I was told lived in the grain. So, the town was not being exactly truthful with me, because they were opening that pond as we were.
You gotta, you gotta talk at the mic, because people on TV can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll sit down.
Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kelsey. What's a night without Kelsey?
Well, it would be pleasant not to have to show up for both of us, but son of a gun, Mr. Fix-It, I'm gonna take care of everything over there.
It's into the microphone.
Mr. Giuliano, you sit here, say in here. Oh, I'm the fixer of everything. Ah, I'm a fixer of everything, you were over at my place a year ago, I'm still waiting for that to be fixed.
I came up with a solution at that point.
I'm still waiting to see any solution be implemented.
Since you're saying, since you're saying me out, since you're, I have a right to.
You were taking offense when I first came in here, that I did not address you. Now you don't return my phone calls.
When was the last time you tried to call me, first of all, Bob?
I'm sorry?
When was the last time you tried to call me?
Now it's, when was the last time I got a hold of Melissa?
All right, hold on, because I'm not a liaison, I've been stripped, because Ray removed me from all my liaison positions.
So can, let's discuss.
So I have, so was anything came through to me, Melissa, at that point? You have my cell number, Bob.
You would like to have me call you?
I, I always answer, I always answer.
I'd be happy to, but it doesn't seem to do any good, because even though I see you sitting here, here.
First of all, I don't pat myself on the back here, Bob, no, hold on, I don't, I don't pat myself on the back, I'm trying to do, for, for, I try to do what I can for everyone here. There was issues when we did sit down, and everyone wants to hear this, because this is what took place when I was there that day. I sat down with Mr. Kelsey, which I did, tried to come up with a solution, that's been an ongoing solution. There was road issues on Kansas Road, which Todd came in with me, or came back, we sat and discussed, he did make some changes. I've been saying from day one, that's a user road, there's issues with the, with that, which as a user ra, road on Kansas Road, and I just had another resident on, approached me, not today, on Sealback, said the same thing about dirt roads and drainage and everything else on there. Part of the problem is the user road, to make the change that truly need to be done, or what you want is to block top the road, which I do agree with, I'd support that, hundred percent.
I don't say that, you're saying that.
Well, you did, you told, no, you told me in the past, why can't anyone do it?
I do not care how it is solved, you can block top the road or not.
But there's certain issues, and, and the other part, which I did speak to Todd about, was trying to use some of that ARPA money, that American Rescue Fund, which I did speak to Todd, and I says, we might be able to use some of that, because it can be a drainage and a stormwater issue, which we have on Kansas Road, but that, unfortunately, as I learned in, in government, it's a slow process. As much as in my business, if you called me up to fix something in your house, we'd take care of it right away. So we're trying to find solutions, I have spoke to Todd on coming up with solutions, and, and, and I know he has been working on it, we're waiting back from our engineer, and Todd.
Three months now.
All right, well, look, unfortunately, we.
I'm thinking the engineer has died.
But if you're gonna single me out.
I'm not single just you out.
You did single me out.
Mr. Reaton, I sent you over a text message with pictures.
Wait, who's that?
I'm sorry.
Well, it's okay, so you did call, you did leave me messages, I had zero new information for you, because we were all waiting on the engineer to send us the drawings. I did let them know that you had called and left messages, and then Melissa told me that she was in touch with you. So that is why I didn't return the call, I passed it on to the people who could give you information. We have since seen some preliminary drawings, I believe, from the engineer.
Send the architects, or the engineers in the lawyer's hands right now with the easement that was done.
So in order for them to do the work that the engineer has drawn, the town attorney is drawing up an easement, which is you giving them permission to work on your property, because some of this is on your property.
I have no objections.
So it's in the.
My only objection is that you keep telling me it's gonna happen, and I'm still waiting three months on this engineer, that was two and a half, three weeks ago, gonna have that paperwork for you.
I agree, it's taken a long time, but it is still, it is still moving forward.
If you're, if you're, if you're town attorney, that you're worried about what you're gonna do with, on other matters, is as rapid as your town engineer, we got fucking problems, pardon my American, and I retract that statement ahead of time.
Calm down, calm down.
But I get, I just don't understand, how do you can sit there, and everybody say, oh yeah, well, we're working on it, but nothing gets done?
Well, I'm not an engineer or an attorney, but the engineer has done the drawings, it's been sent to the attorney, so he can write up the easement.
So I got one other dumb question, did you ever send over to Todd those pictures regarding what they did over at the college?
What college?
Bard College, I went over to, I believe I mentioned this. You've got the picture sent to you in an email, at least according to my phone, it says that it was sent and received.
You sent me pictures of Bard College? I'm confused, I really am.
I was over at college, and they put in a walkway to wherever the heck it is, because I, my theory is, they got tired of having students get run over, so they put in a walkway between a couple of towns.
Okay.
So they got roads like Kansas Road, and by golly, they didn't have to put in any ponds to fix anything. They put a swell down.
They, uh, over by the microphone, they can hear.
They lined it with this size rocks, and it seems to be working just perfectly fine.
Right.
Which seems to me, this young gentleman over here might have a similar problem. The town keeps coming through, making bigger holes, but they aren't getting any runoff. They're letting it run through people's property. This is not a solution. But let me rephrase that, it may be a solution for the town board, but for the jackasses that are sitting there having the floods come through their garage, it's not a solution.
You know, fir, first of all, Bob, when I met you, I'm, I'm all about trying to make.
Oh, please, you know.
No, 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 hold on, hold on.
Please, please, I can't take it anymore.
Get, Bob, calm down.
That's all I hear from you.
No, you know what?
About what I'm all about.
Yeah.
But you're not about getting anything done.
Bob, we're.
You come up here and you do it, for forty-eight hundred dollars a year, Bob. I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna say it, I don't, I don't care anymore, because I heard him coming and attacking.
Are you saying you wanna quit?
No, 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 I'm not quitting, but I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something, and I don't give a crap anymore, because you know what? I came to this town, to be on this board, I, for eight years, I've done something for this town, I donated my time on different meetings and, and boards and everything to make a difference. I came and I tried to help you that day, which we did work on stuff. We got the, you came back a couple months ago and you sat down, Ray said, hey, speak to Todd, work on it, got Mike involved on it, they started getting the, the town engineer. I agree with you, things go slow, one of the first things that Dean, Nancy.
Twenty years is a little slower than I feel like dealing with.
But hold on, I've been on the board for a year and a half.
And I've gotten just as much done.
But so when I came on, I, the first thing I learned in town, in town, in government, because I'm a doer, at the end of the day, I'm a doer, but, but, hold on, at the end of the day, it's a slow process, it's cruel, and I get irritated myself on stuff, why things go slow, and I, and I, and Ray will tell you, because I've told him multiple times, this is ridiculous, it doesn't have to be this way, unfortunately, there are certain things within the state guidelines that were required to. So when you start coming out and you personally, and you mention my name personally, you know, I sat there, I spoke to Todd multiple times, I spoke to him before I went away, says, look, I'm trying to find a way to use some of that ARPA money, to figure a way to, for a solution that maybe we can get that drainage issue done. So you, before you're not knowing what's going on in the backside, and you want to start attacking me personally by name, then we'll go, we'll go for facts on here, and I don't care what anyone wants to say about me.
Okay, I, I think we gotta stop here, the issue is, we got drawings from the engineer, they were sent to Shane, we should, for an easement, which you gotta sign, we gotta approve, and I think someone, now who's that one, is gonna have to find out the status of where these are, and call Kelsey, so he's aware of what we're doing right now, and when to expect maybe construction, now.
Though I would certainly take a look at those photos, they seem to be working quite well over at the college, and I can't imagine that cutting a bank down the side of the road is gonna cost less than, more than putting in a pond.
We're past the point of new ideas being sent to me in photos, the engineer has made a drawing, we're moving on from there.
Who's gonna call?
I'll be in touch.
Okay, Witton will call you.
Can I just make one suggestion, maybe? This whole world would be so much better if we all just communicated, so maybe, if something is going on, if somebody could take a few minutes to send him an email and say, look, we're not gonna speed up the process, it's the way it is, but I want you to know right now, you got this, this, and this, just a couple lines, so he knows that at least we're working on it, okay? That's all it is, a simple communication.
Which is fair, Nancy, it's fair.
Right?
But I haven't spoken, I haven't got a message from Bob in months, and when, anytime you did call me in the past, and I was involved on it, I got in touch with you right away. So I just want to let, I didn't set that, and I was pulled off that, and I wish I could have followed through and still been on the highway, but there's personal differences that go well beyond.
Okay, but maybe we could do that much.
I don't care anymore.
All right?
So Witton will follow up with you, you got his phone number?
Oh, I have his phone number.
I mean, just for record, no one from the town where Carol ever even wrote a response.
Okay, that's.
Nor from the highway department wrote a response, cannot cease to desist letter. Now it would have been common courtesy to have done that.
Okay, we're done with that topic now, we understand. Anybody else? Todd? I don't think we're done with that topic.
I'm gonna address this man's problem right here, with the, there's a beaver dam up on Nine Partners, the problem I have up there is, the old group home put in a set of pipes underneath the ground there that fed out of that pond, that culvert pipe collapsed, we're trying to get that reopened, and what's happened now is, we had a nuisance permit, and a trapper came and got rid of the beavers, now the beavers are back, that pond up there is approaching onto the roadway, it's gonna come up and over top of that. So we got a nuisance guy that the town's already hired, that's been up there with the beaver, he's the one between us that's been coordinating, opening up that a little bit at a time. What happens is, it goes underneath into a cistern that the previous homeowners have, that flows down through there, and like I said, it's clogged, and we're trying to open it up slowly without flooding the previous highway superintendent's house to get down to you. The county did work on that catch basin down by your house, they reduced that, they didn't increase it, they reduced that catch basin there, so I apologize, I will work with you on that, we have the nuisance guy coming back up in. As far as Mr. Kelsey's concerned, the town engineer does have a set of prints that I looked over and we agreed to, right now it is in the lawyer's hands, and this was just last month, that we figured this all out with the engineers and the lawyer, has it, the paperwork, and we're just trying to get the easement finalized, for the town board to approve it, then for you to approve it, to go on your property to fix this once and for all. Once we go up and fix this, once and for all, that's it, we're done. You've lived on that road for how many years? That water problem's been there for how many years? So I, I'm trying, Bob, this is my year and a half in office, I've been trying, you're one person, we have seventy-two miles of road, this man's got a problem, and there's other problems in town. I'm not saying these other projects are more important than you, everybody's important, believe me, everybody's important, but I gotta prioritize my responsibilities as far as the roadwork getting done and everything else in town. So I apologize, Bob, my hands, we've been going crazy over there with everything going on in the highway department, we have not forgotten about you. The set of prints that we have on right now from the engineer, I think is gonna be the final solution for you up there, okay, on Kansas Road, all right? Now, the other things I have is, we have a serious problem with dead deer in the town of Clinton. Today's only Tuesday, we've picked up five deer in the last two days, last week we picked up seven, previous week, we've been averaging five to six a week. I am running out of room with dead carcasses here at the town hall complex. With this mite, or whatever this problem is with these deer dying, it's, it's becoming a nuisance and a problem for us. So I gotta pull guys off of crews, because we're trying to go run around and pick up deer out of people's properties, sides of the road. It's some type of disease, or mite, or something, where these deer go down to water.
In their head.
And drink themselves to death.
In their head.
And DC, NCON, the state, and everybody else, doesn't really want us to pick these things up and bring them back, because what we're doing is, we're transferring, transporting this carcass from one spot back here to the town hall complex, or Bucipsia or Millbrook to get rid of them, and we're just transporting it from one spot to another. What they're advising is, if people can, go to your local store, get bags of lime, and put it over the top of it, and you're gonna have to deal with it, I mean, find somebody buried on your own property, or, like I said, with the lime on top of it, hopefully, it cuts down on the smell. If you drive around town, the town roads, county roads, or state roads, you'll smell like a dead smell, that's what's happening, is these deer are dying left and right, all over. I've had two on my property already, down the road from me in the pond, there was two in the pond down there, and they were out there trying to fish them out, so this is becoming a real problem here in the town of Clinton. The other thing is, is the parks, the parks with this vandalism is getting out of control, the town's really, the town board really has to do something. I mean, between the backboards with these guys coming down, I don't know who it is, or what's going on, but the backboard got busted, they busted down the gates, the bathrooms yesterday, Friends Park, they drove out on Friends Park, tore that all up and everything else, the parking lot, the, the baseball field, back behind the skating rink and everything else. So the town board's really gotta do something, seriously, with these parks, because the vandalism's getting out of control. The other thing is, and the last thing is, we are short on help, you can see tonight, Paul Walsh resigned for the cemeteries, I'm down to one person right now mowing all the parks, the cemeteries and the town hall complex, there's no way one person's gonna keep up. I can't keep giving highway department workers to come and mow and weed whack these cemeteries, I'm sure people are ready, I got people out on vacation, I got one person sick and everything else going on, and then trying to do all these other projects. So everything is like backing up here, so we're gonna figure something out. One person cannot mow and weed whack all these parks and cemeteries to take all, take care of the town hall complex. If not, then each one of the buildings is gonna get a shovel with a bow tie on to it and say, you guys gotta shovel your own sidewalks, because this year, we're coming down, I got one person to do all this, one person, they're not gonna be able to handle this, and like I said, we're short now with the highway department and stuff going on, and it's just, everything's building up.
Is it because we can't find the help, or is it because we're not allocating the help, or both?
A little of everything.
Okay.
It's a little late in the season to try and find somebody that's gonna mow lawns right now, so, you know, there's only a couple, few weeks left, so we'd be looking for somebody and trying to offer them a job for a month.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tony.
Anybody else? Okay, then I'll close this, I make a motion to close the public comment, return to regular order of business, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, ready to adjourn? I make a motion that the town board adjourns the meeting, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, we're adjourned, see you next, second Tuesday of October, on the twelfth.